Regular meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. Call the meeting to order. Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Plaister.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Stefan.
Here.
Chair Rabel.
Here. Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Let me just say something about the new agenda to the members of the commission. Earlier, about a month ago, the chair people of all the various Edina Commissions met with the city council to talk about, you know, agendas and bylaws and procedures and that type of thing. And coming out of that meeting, this was the new format for the agenda for all of the commission meetings. So that's why this agenda looks a little bit different than what we've been doing in the past. So in case you had any questions about why that was the way it was, or is, is the way it is, that's the reason. So, item three on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. I assume you've all had a chance to take a look at that, so I assume that we should probably take a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Adoption of the consent agenda, the first item there is approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of April 27, 2011. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes, or do we have any comments or corrections to the minutes? Commissioner Fisher?
I would move approval of the minutes.
There's a second. Commissioner Stefano?
Um, my name is spelled wrong. The K is forgotten. It's okay.
It is, isn't it? We will make that correction. The K got left off at the end of the line. Thanks for calling that to our attention. Other corrections? We have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Thank you, Melissa, for calling that to our attention. The next item on the agenda is something that normally came towards the end of most meetings, and it's now a community comment section. We invite community residents to share issues, new issues or concerns that haven't been considered by the Planning Commission within the last 30 days, and which are not scheduled for future consideration, or are not items on tonight's agenda. So I would ask, does anyone in the audience wish to comment on anything that the commission's done, or is doing, not on tonight's agenda? Going once? Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. Just to review the procedures for public hearings, we will have public testimony after staff presentations. If you wish to testify on a topic, you're welcome to do so, so long as your testimony is relevant to the discussion. In order to allow everybody an opportunity to speak, we limit testimony to three minutes. Try not to repeat remarks that have already been made. My rule of thumb is, a good comment is a good comment, and it doesn't get any better by being repeated three times. So if the comment's good, it will stand. The first item under public hearings is matter B-11-01, Joel and Amy Anderson, 6808 Cheyenne Court Circle, rather, grant's request seeking a 21.2-foot front yard setback variance. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the subject property is located at 6808 Cheyenne Circle. The request is for a 20.9-foot front yard setback variance from the average front yard setback requirement of 46.9 feet, allowing a 25.6-foot front yard setback for a new two-story walkout home to be built at 6808 Cheyenne Circle. The subject property is located, as highlighted right here. It is a corner lot, and here's an aerial photograph illustrating the existing conditions, what you'll notice. What you'll notice. As it is a corner lot, it's fronting Cheyenne Circle and Cheyenne Trail. It is a vacant lot. The proposal is to build a new home on the subject property, and it will be fronting Cheyenne Trail with the side of the home actually along Cheyenne Circle. The property owners Joel and Mary Anderson are requesting to build a two-story walkout home with a footprint of 4,287 square feet on the vacant lot located at 6808 Cheyenne Circle. The property backs up to Indian Head Lake. The property is a corner lot with street frontage along Cheyenne Trail and Cheyenne Circle. The ordinance indicates that the setback along both street frontages is determined by averaging the front yard setbacks of the adjacent homes located at 6804 Cheyenne Trail, which is 40.8 feet, which is the house to the north, and then 6812 Cheyenne Circle, which is 52.9 feet. The average front yard setback for the subject property is established at 46.9 feet. The new home will be built to conform to the front yard setback along Cheyenne Trail. It'd actually be deeper and further away from Cheyenne Trail than the required setback. And then the proposed setback along Cheyenne Circle, at its closest point, will be 30 feet. It should be noted that there was a house that was built in 1955 on the property, that had been on the property since 2007, that had a 23-foot front yard setback along Cheyenne The new home will improve upon the setback of the previous home by approximately two feet. The lot is unique in shape, with much of the lot affected by the deep front yard setback and 75-foot setback required from Indian Head Lake. The lot is unusual in shape, with the required setbacks narrowing opportunity for location of the building pad towards the back of the lot. It's a very unique shape, with the difficult location between setbacks towards the back of the lot. It should be noted that the zoning board of appeals did approve a similar front yard setback variance for the property from Cheyenne Circle right of way in 2006, to allow a home to be built onsite with a larger footprint of 5,070 square feet, which was larger than, or is larger than, what the applicant is proposing. And that home actually was never built. We do have a survey that was of that home that was to be built at that time. The home was never built, the variance expired, and the plans tied to the survey and the variance is no longer applicable. The property, however, does still support and has consistent conditions for support of a front yard setback variance. The existing site features, again, the subject property is a 33,348-square-foot lot. It's vacant. It's sort of a pork shop-shaped lot, with the proposed new home on it. The previous home that had been onsite, again, in 1955, predates the current front yard setback requirements. Many of the homes along Indian Head Lake, including the home at 6812 Cheyenne Circle, which is the house located right here, were built years before the minimum setback from the lake was established at 75 feet. So it's much deeper towards the back of the lot, which does affect the front yard setback. The building design of the home, as you can see, is a two-story walkout with an attached three-and-one-half stall garage. The proposed first-floor elevation of the home will be one and a quarter feet lower than the first floor of the new home. The new home will be pushed back as far as it can be towards the back of the lot without violating the required setback from the lake. Primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site? Yes, staff believes the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 single-dwelling unit zoning district and complies with all of the requirements, with the exception of front yard setback from Cheyenne Circle, which is established from the average of the neighboring properties that have deeper setbacks than the home that had occupied the subject property since 1955 until it was removed in 2007. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot. The new home will occupy less than 14% of the lot area. The maximum allowed is 25%. The building has been shifted as far back on the lot as possible while still maintaining the 75-foot setback from the Indian Head Lake. The home would maintain the character of the neighborhood. Indian Hills is a unique area with a mix of housing styles and home placement on the lot. There really is no consistency in setback throughout the neighborhood. Minnesota state statutes and Edina ordinances require that the following conditions must be satisfied affirmatively, that it must relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance's requirements. Reasonable use does not mean that the applicant must show that the land cannot be put to any reasonable use without the variance. Rather, the applicant must show that there are practical difficulties in complying with the code. Staff believes that the proposed variance is reasonable. The required front yard setback along the cul-de-sac radius cuts deeply into the lot, with the north lot line angled, resulting in a narrow width between setbacks as you get further and further back into the lot. There are circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly zoned property, that are not self-imposed and self-created. The unique circumstances are the configuration of the lot and imposed setbacks. The previous house was non-conforming regarding setback from Cheyenne Circle, with approximately a quarter of the house footprint overlapping the front yard setback into a Cheyenne Circle. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No. The proposed home would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The new home improves upon the front yard setback from both Cheyenne Trail and Cheyenne Circle that had been provided by the previous home onsite. The Indian Hills neighborhood is an eclectic mix of lot size, configuration, home positioning, and housing style. Many of the homes were positioned, given the topography, views, and lot shape, so there's no consistency from one property to the other. The character and charm of Indian Hills is derived from all of the unique features with the proposed home a consistent fit. Staff recommends that approval should be based on the following findings, that with the exception of the variance requested, the proposal will meet the required standards and ordinances for the R1 single-dwelling unit district. The proposal will meet the required standards for a variance because the proposed use of the property is reasonable, as it is consistent, and improves upon the non-conforming setback that had historically been provided by the previous home located on the property. The lot configuration and imposed setbacks narrow and limit design opportunities towards the back of the lot, where it would be reasonable to locate a home. The new home is entirely behind the back wall of the previous home that had been located there, however, still cannot maintain the required setback within the radius of the Cheyenne Circle cul-de-sac. The intent of the ordinance is to maintain an even and consistent streetscape, given surrounding property improvements. Part of the unique charm of Indian Hills neighborhood is that there's no even or consistent streetscape. The unique circumstances are the configuration of the lot combined with the required setbacks and inconsistency with which homes have been placed on the lots throughout the neighborhood. Approval of the variance is subject to the following conditions. The survey date stamped October 19, 2010. The building elevations date stamped May 19, 2011, and that the property owner needs to submit a copy of the plans for the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District permitting process. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Are there questions of staff from the commission? No questions.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Forrest?
Yeah, I was wondering, could you go over again how the 46.9-foot setback was determined?
Sure. I suppose the one that I guess we consider similar, that would be 68... 6804 Cheyenne Trail is 40.8 feet from the front property line. And the house that is at the end of the cul-de-sac, that is 6812 Cheyenne Circle, is 52.9 feet. So the average front yard setback for the property ends up being 46.9 feet all along the street frontage.
Okay, even though it's a corner lot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Mr. Plaister?
Just looking at this, maybe incorrect here, but is where the 24.8 distance, is that really a side yard, or is that a front yard? I mean, this whole thing's a front.
Well, and that was part of the problem when a lot of people looked at the lot. They assumed that that angled lot line was all side yard, but when you take into account the cul-de-sac, you have to put that front yard setback all the way around the radius of the cul-de-sac as it's...
Even though it's a cul-de-sac?
Correct. It is, it's part of the front yard because there is an adjacent home that fronts the cul-de-sac. So it does cut pretty deep into the lot.
Okay. Commissioner Shear?
Chris, can you show us, at least, I'm not identifying it clearly, where the driveway would be to the three-car garage? I assume it comes off of Cheyenne Trail.
It comes, actually comes off Cheyenne Circle, and you can see it on the survey here. It's actually pretty close to where the existing driveway is. If you went out to the site, the driveway is still there. So it would come up Cheyenne Circle. There's sort of a circular drive here. The garage actually fronts Cheyenne Trail. There's a pretty high ridge from Cheyenne Trail. It's, the lot sits up, so it looks to me like they would be putting the driveway in about the same location of the existing driveway.
So we're going to cover a lot of area with driveway covering?
If it's...
Just sweep around that roundabout, as I'm seeing it, and then over to the three-car garage entrance?
Right. If that's an accurate depiction of where they want to put the driveway.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions of the commission, by the commission of the staff? Okay, thank you, Chris. Do the proponents wish to make a presentation or make some comments about their proposal? Please come to the, one of the side podiums and give us your name and address. Side podium. Thank you.
I'm Amy Anderson. My husband Joel sends his regrets. He's out of town. It does say Mary. I'm Amy, if you want to make that correction. We currently live at 6909 St. Patrick's Lane, which, if you have a good arm, is just a stone's throw from where we're going to be building. So needless to say, we have a vested interest in the neighborhood, the area. We love it. We bought this lot because we want to be on the waterfront. We bought the lot from the current, or the former owner, who was a builder, who did propose the 11,000-square-foot house with the approved variance already in place. Perfectly honest, we didn't want an 11,000-square-foot house with a turret. So we've changed builders, and we feel like we really have a house that fits the lot, fits the neighborhood, fits a lakefront. If I can address your concern right off the bat, we, I come from a home where my dad was a landscape architect. We are very into the yard. We're happy to have a large lot to play with, to plant flowers, grass. We have three children who love to play outside. So from our point of view, we think we have a house that suits the neighborhood very well, so. Any questions?
Questions of the proponent? We haven't had a variance request in months and months, and nobody's got any questions. I mean, this is...
I'm so numb by all the new requirements that we read through.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak on this proposal? Yes, sir.
My name's Darrell Boyd, and I'm across where the driveway is, 6860 Cheyenne Circle.
Okay, I don't want to ask you to come up, but it'd be nice if somebody could give them the microphone, or maybe you can come up.
And I just want to...
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Just want to concur that the only place to put the house is where they're putting it, because of the shape of the lot. If they're going to look at the lake, that's the way they got to set the house. And as previously has been indicated, the previous house, I think, actually, it was closer to Cheyenne Circle, but we're talking a matter of feet. And the builder likewise was very similar. So I think I can speak for my neighbor at 6812, Mr. Peterson, that he would agree also.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. I would note for the record that we received an email from a person by the name of Leslie Roush, who lives at 6808 Cheyenne Circle. All of the commissioners have received that email. She, Ms. Roush, Leslie and Bob Roush also speak in favor of this proposal. Is there another person, please?
My name is Tara Dev, and I reside at 6804 Cheyenne Trail. And I would also like to concur that we've been looking at this vacant lot for many years now, and it just seems like an excellent proposal and a really lovely home that would work very well, and we would like to see this happen in our neighborhood.
Very good. Thank you. Other comments? Does anyone else wish to comment on the proposal? Okay, with that, I will take a motion to close the public hearing and bring the matter up to the commission. Second? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Do we have comments, questions, concerns, issues of the members of the commission? Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
I know we're supposed to ask lots of questions and just spend a half hour on comments, but I just don't see any problems with this. So I just need one second here to find my, I guess I would move approval of the variance request with all of the staff's conditions and recommendations. And I don't know if I need to read through all...
Findings?
And findings.
Okay. Those appear on page five and six of the staff report, staff recommendation.
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
If I might, if I might, Mr. Chair, just recommend, I agree with Commissioner Fisher with respect to the result. I think this is a pretty easy decision. For the record, though, I think it would be helpful to add to the findings, the items identified on page three of the staff report, specifically, page three and page four, specifically the fact that the new home will occupy less than 14% of the lot area, that the building's been shifted back as far as possible on the lot while still maintaining a 75-foot setback, and the fact that I think is perhaps most persuasive, which is that on page four, that there is only 38 feet remaining between the setbacks as a buildable area if you were to use the setbacks. And I just suggest that we add those to the findings.
Would the maker of the motion accept those changes?
Yes, I would.
Was there a second to the motion?
I would accept it as well.
Okay. Very good. Motion then has been made and seconded to approve the proposal based on the findings and supplemented by Commissioner Staunton. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Mr. and Mrs. Anderson, your variance approval has been, variance request has been approved. There is a two-week appeal time, so assuming you get past that two weeks without any appeal being filed, you're free to proceed. Thank you very much. It's good to be back in the variance business again. Next item, reports and recommendations. The first item there is sketch plan review for 5020 and 5024 Indian Ola Avenue, Edina, Minnesota. Chris?
Subject property is located at 5020 and 5024 Indian Ola Avenue. The Planning Commission has asked to consider a sketch plan proposal to redevelop properties at 5020 and 5024 Indian Ola Avenue and the two lots that are behind it. JMS Homes is proposing to tear down the existing family homes. Here's an aerial photograph of the site. It includes the church, the parking lot, and the two lots that are part of the parking lot against J Place, and then there's two homes along Indian Ola Avenue. So it would be tearing down the two homes and also utilizing the two lots that are currently parking area for the church that is to the north. JMS Homes is proposing to tear down the existing single-family homes and build seven detached homes over the four-lot, 26,730-square-foot area. The applicant has expressed interest in providing one of the homes as an affordable housing unit per Met Council guidelines. The homes which stretch from Indian Ola to J Place, there would be underground parking for each unit with access from Indian Ola. The surrounding land uses, as you can see from here, the lighter area, the white area is single-family. The dark black is R2 double-dwelling unit districts. The blue is a higher-density residential, and the red is 50th and France, which is a commercial zone. This gives a little more context of what's around the site. You have single-family homes to the south, to the east, and then also across J Place, backing up to the church parking lot. And then to the north, you have the church, the parking lot, and two double-dwelling units that are along West 50th. The proposed density will be 11 units per acre, which would require a comprehensive plan amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential. A rezoning of these sites from R1 single-dwelling unit district to PRD planned residential district would also be required. Here's a schematic of the proposed plan, which would be seven single-dwelling units on lots and then underground parking for them. There was a compliance table that was included in your packet demonstrating how the proposed new building would comply with the PRD zoning standards. The proposal would require a number of variances. It would require two variances for building setback from Indian Ola and from J Place. It would also require two variances for drive aisle and parking lot setback. The acreage of the church site to the north for the two lots that would be incorporated in this project would reduce the acreage of the church property from 1.1 acres to 0.81 acres. The minimum requirement is three acres for a church property. This gives you an idea of the site plan, which would show the individual building paths of the homes. Some of them would be slightly larger, and the ones closer to J Place would be slightly smaller. There would be a replacement of the parking. There would be 20 parking stalls that would be removed, and then 20 parking stalls that would be reinstalled, 16 along the north portion of the property here, and then four along the westerly property adjacent to J Place. No church parking stalls would be lost as a result of the project. The 22 stalls would be replaced by those 20. I did receive an email indicating that there is a seating capacity of the church of 175 seats, which would require one-third for parking requirement, which would be 59 stalls. I was counting off the aerial photograph, and then including those 20 stalls that would be replaced, it would appear that there would be 59... it would appear that there would be fifty-nine stalls that would be required, and that the property would be providing fifty-seven stalls. While the proposal would be an improvement over existing buildings on the site and the provision of an affordable housing unit would be a benefit to city, staff does have some concerns. The medium-density residential development would be located adjacent to properties owned R-one on all sides, the single-family homes on three sides. The proposal for eleven units per acre is at the high end of medium-density residential range of five to twelve units as outlined in the comprehensive plan. Staff is also concerned about the number of variances that would be necessary for the project. And with that, I will stop, and I will answer questions you may have. I do know that the JMS does have a PowerPoint presentation. This is a sketch plan review, so this is the opportunity for the planning commission to look at the project. There's been minimal analysis done on the project on our part as far as the building department and engineering department have not reviewed it at this point.
Okay, questions of staff? Chris, I have a question, if I might. In concept, this seems to be similar, similar in feel, although it's not exactly the same as the townhouses at fifty-two-hundred France. In other words, several units brought together with underground parking and that type of thing. When fifty-two-hundred France was done, if you recall, were there similar issues or concerns at that time? Do you remember?
Similar, but not exactly the same. It's along France Avenue. It's rather isolated. There is park, you know, it did take up parking for the church. There were some concerns about the residential, that it backs up to the homes that are off of Halifax that are to the west and then also to the north because there are R-one properties around that as well. It's similar that they have shared underground parking, not the same in the sense that it is a townhouse development. It's their two-and-a-half-story townhomes. They're connected. The comprehensive plan actually was consistent in that area for that type of development, a higher-density residential development at that time.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Mr. Potter?
I just have a couple. Is J Place the road, is that a public road?
It's a public road, but it really functions more like an alley. I mean, the only, the only one that, the only people that would be accessing it are those folks that have garages that are off of J Place. It's not really improved for street frontage, but it is considered, it's a public right-of-way, a public street.
Okay, so the church members come in there too, right, down there, I'm assuming?
They could, yeah.
And then, maybe you don't know this, is, so the church would actually is non-conforming right now there, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, are these a rent or own?
Pardon?
Are these rented or owned?
The units that are being proposed? I don't know.
We can ask the proponent-
That's fine, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Potts?
How does staff address the distance between these building units?
Well, it's part of the zoning. Actually, it would be permitted because of the rezoning. That isn't an issue. It would be just the setbacks that would be from the lot lines to the edge of the buildings, and they're short on the Indianola side and the J Place side. They'd need variances for that.
So this remains one lot?
Well, they're individually platted lots on a common area, and they are not connected, but the density and the distances between the structures are acceptable because of the zoning district that it would be in. The underground parking, as I understand it, is all shared. I mean, it's one garage.
Thank you.
Mr. Schroeder, or Fisher, Schroeder?
Chris, is it, do you know, is there, was there a discussion, and I know it's sketch plan, so there's not a lot of discussion, that's the whole point, but any discussion about PUD here versus trying to get rezoning?
Right.
I mean, PUD is a rezoning, but just why not PUD?
Because it's an R-one zoning district, and we don't allow PUD in R-one.
Okay, I should know the rules we made.
That's a great question. Commissioner Scher?
Chris, I want you to clarify the parking situation. Is there a diagram, my count does not get to fifty-seven or fifty-nine. Have you got a diagram you can put up and show me how we get that for the church as the remaining requirement for the one hundred and seventy-five seats?
Well, and I'm not going to swear by it because I did get the email later this afternoon, and what I did was I included, this is showing the way the conditions are existing currently. So this row of parking will be removed, and there'll be the homes within these two lots. They will replace the twenty stalls that they're removing here by putting sixteen stalls directly north of, and you can see that on their site plan.
That might be the part I was missing.
Right here. They'll be replacing parking with sixteen stalls directly north of these units, and then there'll be four stalls along here. And then I just counted from the aerial photograph the remainder of the stalls that I could see, and I was coming up with that number.
But then to clarify, so to get to the requisite number for the church, we're counting twenty stalls that are on the proposed subject property?
Correct.
Okay.
Or, yes.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Staunton?
So just to be clear, so does the proposal satisfy the off-street parking requirement for the church?
I believe that it's short currently, and it will still be short the same amount.
Okay, so it doesn't make it, it keeps it about the same, but it's non-conforming from a parking perspective as well as from a lot area perspective?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
As far as I can tell at this point.
Can I follow up on that question then? So does it satisfy the parking required for the proposed development?
It does. They have underground parking that would satisfy that.
What about guest parking? In the PRD, are we required to provide guest parking?
You have, it's the same parking that would be required. It would be just the two underground stalls. I'm, and I'm maybe projecting here a little bit, but I'm assuming that the four stalls that are on the side near J Place would function to some degree, and so would these for guest parking, but they are also being counted for the church parking.
Other questions of staff? Thank you, Chris. Could we have the presentation of the comments by the proponent, please? There's a microphone for you.
And a microphone, wow. Good evening. My name's Jeff Shane Wetter, and first of all, I'm thrilled to be here tonight. And the process, it's great to be back in Edina about a sketch plan, and I wish every community that we do business in had this same process. It allows the developer to come very early in the conceptual stages of a development and ask for input and feedback to help shape the project and frankly make the approval process much more efficient. So I'm very grateful to be here tonight and share our sketch plan with you. Some projects our company's done over the last twenty-six years in Edina, a little bit of history for you. We, my wife and I have been building for twenty-six years, and one of our projects that actually inspired this project is here in Edina, Ivy Way, which is Chapel Hills, which would have very similar setbacks between the single-family units, that this is a single-family project, and ironically the same zoning, or similar zoning, if we go the senior route, that existed to facilitate this other project here in Edina. Past developments, we call this neighborhood Bishop's Walk, and we think that's kind of fun, being that it's next to a church, and it's a pedestrian community because you can walk to Fiftieth and France. It would be our forty-third development as a company. Chapel Hills was our eleventh, so we've been busy. The concept is for seven relatively small detached dwellings. So much like the surrounding neighborhood, although the zoning's different, the streetscape would be single-family detached homes, and the design has significantly de-emphasized the use of an automobile in the sense that we've taken these seven lots and conceptually, we dig a rectangular hole for the foundation, sort of like a shoebox, and inside the shoebox, we park cars. We put the lid on the shoebox, and then we sod the lid, so a lot of green space. We have, I think, twenty-seven percent hardcover on the site, and you don't see driveways, you don't see a lot of hardcover, you don't see any garage doors, so the car is very much so de-emphasized, and the pedestrian village concept is very much so emphasized. The, I think one of the most important lifestyle, and by the way, this PowerPoint has been delivered to the city, so copies are available. It's, this isn't proprietary anymore, so you can all keep this and bring it with you. But the Fiftieth and France community is a unique asset in Edina, and I wouldn't propose this project, for instance, in Edina West. This is a Fiftieth and France response to what the market tells us would be very important. The, it's a transitional site, so the transitional zoning, it steps from R-one all the way to commercial, and we're flanked to the north by duplexes, apartments, and to the west condominiums. But the design elements that we've addressed are really traditional housing in the single-family format, plus elevators from the garage up, plus wider doorways, ADA-style bathrooms, spacious baths, and truly creates sort of an aging-in-place amenity that our target market, our young buyers, might be young professionals, but more likely they're going to be guys my age that have an empty nest and might be planning to stay in the community until they're just done. It's better than saying dead. So buyers at Bishop Walk are going to be attracted to the amenities of Edina and the safe housing investment in this marketplace. That we want to make a safe housing investment. Interestingly, the American Lives survey suggested seventy percent of the respondents that they would prefer a smaller home and a smaller home site to being in the neighborhood they want. And this is very different than the attached condominiums that Noonan built. This is more of a response to, you know, I kind of like underground heated parking, I kind of like walking to Fiftieth and France, I want a smaller, lower maintenance, maybe even carefree environment, but I don't really want to live in an attached product. So Edina's zoning permits this opportunity. The homes will be consistent with JMS quality. They'll be a blend of old-world charm and modern architecture, but certainly modern building science, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Bishop's Walk is a very well-organized site, and staff's absolutely correct. We've, it's, there's an old alleyway that was vacated, so it changed the depth of the southerlymost lot about a third of the way into the site, and so we will have a couple, whether you think of them as rear yard or front yard, setback issues. If we don't change the footprint of our plans, the geometry of the plan, we've got a shortage on about three or four of the units that, it's not a big deal, and relative to the type of housing, it just, it works well, but there is that one issue. We've incorporated a winding sidewalk into our site plan that kind of meanders through the site. We see that lit with solar cell-controlled lighting, some park benches, and that sidewalk will have access to the individual courtyards on each home, so there's a real connectivity to the pedestrian lifestyle. The private patios, photo cell illumination, it just, it's going to create this very uniform, very seasonally appealing neighborhood with trees that'll change colors, night lighting that'll come on at four in the afternoon in the winter, but not till nine o'clock during the, you know, summer, and so very thoughtful design, comfortable pedestrian destination, ease of lifestyle, snow, lawn, sidewalk maintenance, solar lighting, city water, city sewer, obviously, all done for our residents. The, this is considered PRD or PSR, two different zonings that staff, we have not, we've not reached a conclusion yet. The differentiation between PRD and PSR is an application, so any other community would probably be a PUD, but it's about whether we take a age-restricted approach. So if it's the pleasure, I think it's going to be fifty-plus residents anyway because I think that's the market, and if it's the pleasure of the city to see it as PSR, where Chapel Hills, we just did PRD, we're supportive of that concept, and there really isn't any difference in densities or setbacks or anything else between the two. So principal use, single-family, single-lot and block legal description, so you own your own house on your own lot, and then the parking would exist by cross easement. So that big garage would be just a great big easement that would have reciprocal rights to all the residents within the covenants and restrictions for the neighborhood. So a little bit unique, certainly cross easements will work. Seventy-two percent green space is currently proposed with only twenty-eight percent hard coverage, so kind of, kind of green. Transitional zoning, we're surrounded by virtually every other zoning district, and as you look at the existing zoning, you can see, I'm proposing PRS on our site. Straight north, we have duplexes separated by the parking lot for the church, flanked by the church, and then across the street, we have apartment zoning here and condominium zoning here, and straight north, of course, commercial zoning and Lunds over here, and then PRD four back down in this corner again. So yes, single-family, quite a bit of mixed zoning as we look at that. Helping you see the site in scale, this is a view from the southeast. So we'd be east of Fiftieth and France. This building here would be Lunds. This would be the municipal liquor store. This is the condominium to our east, single-family to our south. Our project in scale, single-family here, story and a half buildings, so from a topographical standpoint, the peak of our roofs are significantly lower than any of the single-family to our south or to our west. North, we have the church, which sits right here, and this is the view from the north, so looking south. The single-family homes that we're proposing are on the south boundary. The apartment is here, the condominium here, Lunds here, and the US Bank building here. So kind of an interesting transitional zoning area. This is the view from the east. This is the view from the east, again, Lunds and the condominium building, I believe, share similar height in total. And then the site drops down, and we, of course, would be supplying through our engineers and surveyors a section drawing, which is in your packet from staff, that shows that low height. And I think that was really important, to nest the project into the site, so it didn't become a great big condominium building like 5200 France. That's not at all what this is, that our designer and architectural committee representative, Kathy Alexander's here, and she's going to add a few comments about the design that she conceived for us as soon as I'm done. View from the west, and it kind of, this is my favorite view, because it really does help you understand the small scale of our buildings compared to, for instance, this single-family house that sits next door to us, that in hardcover and footprint is virtually three times the size of our hardcover and footprint. So we're much smaller. Air quality, definitely taken into consideration with our design ventilation in all our homes. We, in 1994, conceived the American Lung Association's first health house, and built several homes with the ALA during the mid and late 90s. And we still, to this day, are building our homes to exceed at JMS, the American Lung Association's indoor air quality standards. Water quality, two things. Obviously, great water supplied by the city of Edina, so we have clean drinking water, but also the discipline of our design, reducing the runoff volume by using significantly less hard surface than typical residential construction. So we have those two components. We talk about health and safety, that exercise is part of being healthy, and moving from this site, you don't need to jump in your car to run and get a six-pack at the liquor store, you can just walk. Green path. Green path is something that I suspect none of you have heard of. This is the newest initiative, and was just launched in the last week by the Builders' Association of the Twin Cities. And these homes will be built to comply with the Green Path strategies and criteria. So we think this project creates a neat opportunity for JMS Homes to be one of the first all-green Green Path projects in the state of Minnesota. In closing, we think this is a very unique project. It's, it's definitely out of the box, being built on top of the shoebox. There's nothing like it exactly that I'm aware of. It's detached, single-family homes on top of a common garage element. So I really don't have another project like it that I can point to. We, we're excited about it, we think it's very innovative. We, I want to answer a couple of the questions I heard earlier, just to save them from coming up again. There's no loss of parking, no net loss of parking. The parking that exists today will exist when we're done. There will be a temporary loss of a little parking during construction. Parking ratio is really almost twice what's required in the PRS zoning. We, we, we think in the final analysis, we're going to achieve more than three parking spaces per dwelling unit. Although we don't have the final design done, I have a goal of four, and I'm pretty confident I'm going to get three. So we're going to have a lot of parking. About 27,000 square feet of parking, perhaps. So we are different, it's unique, and I'm excited to hear your feedback. The units will be owned by their residents. There will not be any rental, and rental will be prohibited. So, not available for rent. Kathy? And then I'll take any questions you have, and if I can't answer them, Kathy will.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Alexander with Alexander Design Group. Been in business for 25 years in Wayzata, address is 401 Lake Street, Wayzata. And I'll keep this brief, I think Jeff about covered everything, but we are extremely excited about this project. Our world is changing, the market has definitely changed the past few years, and I think this addresses a lot of the needs of the marketplace. It's, it's smaller housing, it's closer in, it's very pedestrian-friendly, and this would be a great, great addition to Edina. It's very green. We did just launch Green Path this week, and these homes can be Green Path certified. So, we'd love your input, feedback, any questions you have, we'd be glad to answer them, so that we can take this project further.
Thank you. I have a question, and then we'll have other questions and comments from the commissioners, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear from anyone in the audience that wishes to raise a point. What's, what's going to screen these homes from the church parking lot and the parking lots behind? I assume the church parking lot is going to be behind these, they're going to front, facing south, is that right?
Correct. The, the parking lot would be to the north of the site. So as you look at this picture, the parking would be north, or this way. The existing homes would be this way. We would be lining the property line with trees and this sidewalk, so that the setback to the courtyard entrances would, to the pedestrian, feel like the traditional streetscape is a buffer between the existing homes and the new homes, except there isn't a street, it'd just be a sidewalk. So the front yards would face south.
Right. But what about on the, on the north side of the, of the homes?
On the north side of the homes, there would be, think of those as rear yards, there would be a PVC-coated aluminum picket fence, so a maintenance-free picket fence that would separate the rear yard of the home from the new parking spaces. And you should have a site plan that shows the parking that runs east-west along the entire northern border of the site. So there'd be a transition between the parking spaces and the yards, which would be, again, grass and landscaped and so forth.
Is that what this is?
Conceptually, yes, sir.
Okay, moving, is there a difference in elevation? I assume this is yard around each of these units?
That's correct.
And they're built on top of this garage?
Correct.
Is the garage below grade, so this grade, is this about the same level as this?
Very similar. There's about six feet of topography change across the entire site as it currently exists from a grading standpoint. So that on the easterlymost corner of the site, which is closest to you, yes, that would be about four feet above existing grade, which is ironically very similar to the first-floor elevation of the home that now occupies some of that parking space. There's a, there's a small retaining wall and a fair amount of grade change between the sort of alleyway that approaches the south side of the church going into that back parking lot. And by the time you get back to J Place, the site's very flat. And so we've tried to respect the existing topography, and not create a lot of grading or grade change. And we've used the existing topography, really is a design advantage to the site. The southerlymost boundary of the site is virtually flat, with all the land to the south of it. So as far as grade changes to the site, there won't be a whole lot of grade changes.
Okay. And what, what, what forms the foundation of the homes? Because it look, you know, you're digging it down, and this, this whole area under here is going to be garage.
Correct.
So what supports these homes?
Great question. The, the lid of the box will be Spancrete, which is plank, planks of concrete. And we can place the, those will be designed in such a way that the load of these buildings will be placed on top of those planks, similar to, similar to the way you'd build a parking ramp, if you intended to put something heavier than a car on one of the decks in the parking ramp. Our engineers will get it right.
I hope so.
So do we.
Okay. Other, other questions, other proponent by Mr. Shanelet or by the commission members? Mr. Chair?
Mr. Shendure, you alluded to the private patios, and wondering where they are on the drawing. Where does each house have its patio?
Between each home, there would be a side courtyard that could be, and depending on whether the house is a C shape in a floor plan, if that makes sense, or an L shape, that we're talking about an outdoor patio that would be similar in size to a conservative deck, not a huge space. And then that can be screened with either landscaping or fencing.
So, so there are six spaces between the seven buildings. Does someone not have one?
No, the end unit would have the very end. So they would have actually no neighbor on one side. So if you, if you had the last unit, you would have, you'd either be open to Indianola or to J Place. So the, the end units, actually, one of them could have two patios if they wanted, and the other one would have one. Generally, the construction of the units, if you would think of one of the exterior walls, either the east or the west, and we don't have that finalized yet, would have a zero lot line type of configuration. So that the width of each lot lends itself to all the open space being on one side, and the setback from the next unit becomes the side yard of that other unit. So generally, we'd be building the homes not centered on their lot, but skewed to one side or the other to create that maximum side yard. I'm not familiar with any zero lot lines in Edina. Chris?
Vernon?
Oh, sure, the, yeah, Old Vernon. You're correct. Old Vernon is zero, you're, wow.
So I'm assuming then that the patios, because we've got, on J Place's side, we've got those four parking spaces that come right up to that last site.
So as we-
So they're all going to be to the east?
As we refine the design, it would make sense, I think, for the courtyards to be east of each home, that intuitively, I agree with you.
Mr. Shendure?
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions. Where is the north property line? Is it actually the one that kind of goes down the middle of the bay of parking?
The, the north line, we actually have a little bit of flexibility with where it ends up, because we're turning around, and we, we haven't finalized the plat yet, so we're going to be working the ratios of hardcover to, and we need to be less than a third in the PRS, is my understanding. So the actual final size of the site hasn't been determined yet, because it's a remnant piece coming from the church. So we think that the line we're showing in the site plan is generally where it would be.
So the church won't actually own its parking?
The church will own everything north of our lot line, everything south of that line, their parking rights to that space will exist by easement, parking easement, that's exclusive to the church.
So part of what you're doing is trying to define the lot line to accommodate a hardcover percentage in this particular zoning district. But will you go back and kind of revisit what the roof actually is? Because in my mind, hardcover is areas of the site which rain can't penetrate through. And if you're just doing an extensive green roof, it's not, it's holding some water, but it's not doing the same thing as what grass growing on real earth would do. And if you calculate the area of your garage, and use that as the hardcover, because water can't penetrate through, you're actually over 40% hardcover, not 30% or 28%. So I'm wondering how, how you will get to, is that just another variance we would have to consider?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. There are, from a perm rate on the site, and the permeation of the rainwater, the green area would absolutely handle water runoff, and when it left our underground roof, if you would, for the shoebox, it reaches natural soil. So perm rate, I think you'd calculate by what can absorb-
That soil's already saturated by the water that's fallen on the soil that actually, on the grass that actually has soil, real soil below it. Green roof's not actually work that way. There's a capacity, but it's certainly less than natural earth has its capacity of water.
You're correct. But the rainwater still reaches its natural filtration basin, so green is green. The hardcover question you asked specifically, if we have a thousand-foot house, you'd have a thousand feet of roof. So the footprint of these homes is generally a thousand square feet, some are in the high 900, some are nearly 1,100. But when you look at a typical home in Edina that our company has built, they range from 2,200 to over 10,000 square feet. So these homes are considerably smaller than your typical single-family home in Edina. And as a matter of fact, by zoning, they're required to have two bedrooms. So these aren't big homes, these are detached, small dwelling units.
Mr. Chair, I need to follow up with staff, and, and Chris, you probably don't know this off the top of your head, but does our hardcover definition include something like he's talking about, or is it exclude something like he's talking about for the, for the roof? Or does it even address that? Because in my mind, it's not how much green is on the site, it's how much capacity the site has to absorb water back into the natural kind of soil profile. And it seems we're limiting that on this particular site, not just by the amount of parking, but by the amount of actual building that occupies soil infiltration space for runoff water.
Our ordinances do not address that, they aren't quite that advanced at this point?
So then, when we look at this from a watershed perspective, are there other issues we need to deal with relative to stormwater management? Because we've taken it out of single-family hardcover, does the watershed district have a say in how we deal with what, with stormwater management on the site?
I believe they would. Again, this is sketch plan, we haven't really gotten that far.
Yeah, but I just want to know what the process is going forward.
Right. They would, the watershed district would have to look at it.
Mr. Potts?
Several things I like about this, and a couple of questions. I think, I like this approach to increasing the density. In the 50th and France area, I think it's, it's ready to handle something like this. I also appreciate the, the shared parking strategy with the church, I think that's a, a good solution here. And of course, the affordable housing unit. I think my questions have to do with reconciling what's supposed to be a walkable living situation and three or four stalls per unit, which I think, parking stalls per unit, which seem to work against each other. But I think there may be some opportunities then to create some space to manage stormwater, rather than provide additional parking spots here. And so as I look at this and think about the pedestrian-friendly aspects of it, I'm trying to figure out how I'd walk from here to 50th and France, and, and I don't see how I can do it without walking- And, and I don't see how I can do it without walking in the street somewhere. So I think there, I'm looking for sidewalk connections.
Sure. Your route would not be directly east-west. You'd either go north to Fiftieth and then go, uh, west, east, or you could go south on Indianola and come around onto Halifax. And you have to, when you're walking, you either have to go half a block north or half a block south.
And, and from what I can see, you're not able to take a sidewalk on that route. So I guess as, as you carry this forward, to make sure that we're not creating a living space where somebody would rather take the elevator down and get in their car and drive to Luns than walk there would be, you know, is important, I think.
We'll have to look at the sidewalk plan because I, I know there's sidewalks on Fiftieth. I believe there's a sidewalk in front of the church on Indianola. If there isn't, maybe we'll have to create one.
I don't think it's across the street either.
There isn't one on that side of the street. The, the east side of Indianola has no sidewalk. I would imagine we could create a sidewalk, um, on the west side of Indianola, running north. I would have to ask the church's permission to make that part of our transaction, but that, that's a very nice idea.
That'd make a big difference. And I guess, um, just the, the final comment is I think relative, the, the scale of this relative to the adjacent single-family lots to the east of this site doesn't pose a problem. I don't think this, in this, what you've described as a transition zone, I think is accurate. I think it works. I think, um, those residences are large enough to hold their own, if you will, in creating a streetscape with this new proposal.
Mr. Platter?
So you talk about walkability and biking and things. Where, where would people put bikes? Is there outside storage considered? Or is there, they go down in the parking? Or what are some other amenities?
It's a great question. And that's why in the garage, we have more than two parking spaces per unit. And we might actually be marketing those as two parking spaces plus a storage unit. And whether you have a bike or several bikes or a kayak or, you know, storage is important. And that's why we're fully utilizing this below-grade space to create those opportunities. So I'm not assuming that my residents are all going to have three or four cars. I think my residents may have one or two cars. But having that additional storage space for stuff and bikes is really important. And that'll be a big differentiator for this project because one of the number-one objections that our research has given us is lack of storage in some of our competing, or what we perceive to be competing options for home purchasers.
People downsize, but they can't get rid of their stuff.
We live in Minnesota.
Mr. Carpenter?
Just a couple of questions regarding the site location. And if I'm understanding, if I'm understanding at the, the front of these homes basically be steering into the backyard of the properties in front of them? Is that, uh, am I understanding that correctly? That that's, that's, that will be the view from the front of those homes, steering right into the backyard of the?
Correct. The front, the front of these houses would face the south.
Because I'm thinking in the best of all worlds, where, where I would like to see something like this would be where the, those properties would be fronting a street as opposed to the back of the adjoining property. It just seems awkward. And I'm trying to put myself in the position of somebody who's a potential buyer. That would seem a little bit unattractive to me.
The two that face J Place and Indianola would fa, the fronts would-
Right.
-front those streets.
But, but the rest of them, one, two, three, four, five, five of the properties would all be-
It's interesting that you ask that. And Kathy would confess that the first iteration of this plan had it reversed. And if it was the requirement, as we work through design with staff, that the do, the front doors of the streetscape and that sidewalk all be reversed, it's certainly a design that we would look at and, and give serious consideration to. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, the neat, the neat thing about this process is I get to hear from the city before I spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on design-
I agree with that.
And I can work to something that's truly better that way. I don't, from a marketability standpoint, I don't think one sells better than the other. But because I really believe that it's, I'm sort of indifferent to that. So if it's the pleasure of staff and the commission to reverse the orientation that we're showing so that it's backyard to backyard, we can do that. My thinking, or Kathy's and several other members of our staff's thinking, was why don't we use the rear yards as a great big pedestrian corridor and more of a, uh, green space buffer sense of arrival and de-emphasize the relationship to the existing church parking lot? So that's how this flip, the intuitive flip happened. This is still to me like the night I met my best friend. And if you each think of your best friend in the world, the day you met that person, they were a complete stranger. And then a friendship evolved. That's sort of how I feel about this south-facing sidewalk. It's a new concept. I'm getting used to it, but I'm really quite open to doing it in a more conventional format, which will be backyard to backyard, if that is the pleasure of the commission.
The, the flip side of that, though, and this may be where I'm coming from a little bit. I mean, I'm, I'm not necessarily all that fond of the idea of flipping around and steering at the parking lot either. That, that, that would be a negative as well. So I'm struggling a little bit with the location.
Try this one, though. Twenty years from now, do you really believe that that'll be a parking lot? And if you have a vision to further redevelopment of Edina and further infill, it's probably logical that the next phase of something, we would then have backyard to backyard. I can't promise that there'll be a phase two, but I, I think it's highly probable there might be a phase two.
And are you open at all to, uh, to, uh, decreasing the density a little bit? I know that this is something that staff has right, has raised an issue with.
We actually already have. We, the first concept we drew was eight units. And to be honest, it really didn't work very well. So then we drew it at seven units. And what's driving, um, what's driving our project? It's sort of trying to be somewhat affordable. And that I'm trying to amortize the land into, uh, a total construction project. That if I reduce unit count, I'm going to end up increasing average price per unit. There's room in the marketplace to do that, but part of this concept was to be small and relatively affordable. So that's the trade-off that I would be suffering if I was required to further reduce the density.
And maybe this is already mentioned, or I might have just missed it, but what is the projected, uh, market price for the homes?
We're projecting pricing of less than six hundred thousand dollars per unit.
Anthony?
Um, you keep stressing the pedestrian walkability to France, but, um, most people won't want to walk to France, like during the winter months. Um, how easy is it to get into your garage?
From your unit or from the street?
From the unit.
Well, you, there's an interior stairway or an interior elevator. So very easy. Each unit has its own elevator.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Just make sure it's not so easy that they start building out bedrooms in the garage. But, uh, just kidding. You know, I, I applaud the creative approach here. I actually, as Commissioner Potts, um, mentioned earlier, I actually appreciate the, and this is generally a good location. You know, near Fiftieth and France would be the right place to try to do this. Because everyone wants to be near Fiftieth and France. And, um, not everyone can afford, you know, the typical house around Fiftieth and France. And there are a lot of good parts of this. The thing I, I get concerned about is just looking at the concept right here is that it might, it, it feels like it's just the, the depth of the, the lot that you're creating is just not quite there in terms of, and maybe, at least at the scale I'm looking at it, you know, if you, if you're looking at the parking spots on the north side, as you were describing, if I was hearing you write sort of this picket fence, um, between the parking and the, the building, unless I'm just misreading this, it's like, there's like two feet in there. So it feels like it wants to have, um, you know, I'm talking ideal world here, but it feels like it wants to have just a little bit more breathing room there. And no, this is what you're dealt. I just don't, um, you said that, that lot line on the north side is still potentially in flux. And I don't know if there were a way in all of this to just create a little bit more breathable space. Have you, you, you must have struggled with that as you're laying out the concept.
Yeah, we can look at it. Um, the, when I was working on the design, the way I looked at that north lot line was more like a side yard setback. And most of the glass on these houses is facing either east or west. Having, and that's the area that would be more backyard, so to speak. The, the side with the least desirability for use is going to be the side next to the church parking lot.
Sure.
Mr. Stotin?
I also find the design and the concept kind of intriguing. What I'm more concerned about, and it picks up on a comment you made earlier about the kind of twenty years hence, is the mechanics of how we get from here to there. I mean, we're talking about a comprehensive plan change. We're talking about a zoning change. And the PRD, which is what staff has identified for us in the, in the table and, um, materials, basically would allow much more than this. We could have three stories or forty feet. Uh, we can have thirty-four hundred, um, square feet per unit. So I think what we're saying, if we do this unless, and that's why I think Commissioner Fisher's comment about the PUD is intriguing. Because what we're really saying is from these properties on the south, all the way to France, or to Fiftieth, I'm sorry, you're really envisioning a change from an R1 to a medium density for all of those eventually. I mean, that's really the direction that we're going to go with this. And while this design might sound like an intriguing halfway point, it's kind of single-family, but it's, it's, it's in, in between the kind of density that's allowed in a PRD3 or in a PSR and an R1. We don't currently have a zone that permits that. And so I'm a little concerned about, because as you know, if we change the comprehensive plan, change the zoning, then it does, you, you, you don't have to build what you're proposing here. Or if something happens and somebody else buys it, they don't have to build what's proposed here. They can build much more. And I'm concerned that we not go to that level. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I, um, I would share your concerns in that, um, my long-term vision, you know, I, I grew up here in Edina. I was one of the last graduates from Edina East. My business is located here in Edina. I wouldn't see anything significantly greater in magnitude than this type of project. And the safeguards that protect your concerns, almost any other community I've worked in, this would have come forward as a PUD, a planned unit development. And the truth is, that's a negotiation. There are no rules. And in this particular case, Edina has a relatively unique zoning ordinance, which is good for projects like Chapel Hills or Old Vernon or this. And the rezoning that I'm asking for would apply only to the real estate that this project sits on. Now, when you look at the zoning map, you would say, okay, I see the commercial, I see the PSR four, I see, but my application would only change my real estate. The duplexes that are directly north of the parking lot on Fiftieth, they would remain R2. And the church zoning would remain church. So any future development, that developer would have to come back to the city and ask for all the same things I'm here for. And at that same time, I would hope that the city would say, we created Bishop's Walk as a transitional zoning between R1 and the higher-zoned apartments and condominiums. And that we would like to see that vision carried forward. And that might be twenty years from now. But when that happens, I would hope that the city would not entitle three or four stories or a condominium. That the flavor should, I think, be transitional, not more intense. That's just my opinion. But I, I hope that answers your question.
Well, it, it does. I mean, one question, and maybe, Chris, you want to chime in on this. You, you, why is not R2, is it too dense for an R2? You know, I, I mean, as a practical matter, once you've kind of set that standard here and you look north to Fiftieth Street, when somebody comes in with those remaining four lots and you've got the R2, you've got a PRD3, you've got PRD just across, um, Indianola on Fiftieth wrapping around, you know, it's going to be hard to, to address that issue. And, and I just see, I just think we have to have our eyes open if we're going to change this to this zoning, that that's, that's what we're saying is our kind of long-range plan for that area. And I'm not sure how the people who own R1, single-family homes around that are going to feel.
I, I think that the single-family project that we're trying to promote here is significantly better than more of the duplexes and things like that that exist. I think this is a more contemporary approach to land use and, and planning. And I, I also believe that there will be a couple of variances required. And within that approval, you can certainly say that the trade-off was that it isn't four stories, it isn't three stories. In most cases, it isn't even two stories. It's story and a half structures. So that nesting might be part of that compromise or that, that trade-off.
Mr. Forrest?
I think it's a really unique and creative project. And there's a, a lot of your points, I, I think, are wonderful. Um, I think you make some very good points. I'm concerned, however, because I see the apartment condos on the corner of Fiftieth and I think it's Halifax, that is the transitional zone between the R1 and, and the commercial district. And, uh, you know, I admit, I live in that neighborhood, so I'm sensitive to this. But it's like the commercial district is a loaded gun pointing right at us. And the traffic on Fiftieth Street has gotten horrendous. But yet I, there are good things too, though, about the fact that it's such a vibrant district. And I, I agree with the idea of walkability. However, the homes across the street, now I can't remember exactly which ones, but recently there were teardowns and rebuilds there. And people put their savings, their investments into those new homes. And I can't speak for them. I don't know what their, their thinking would be. I don't think it would detract from property values necessarily. But on the other hand, I get back to my old soapbox about reliance on, you know, people have reliance on what the zoning code says. And you say that, you know, those two duplex lots to the north of the church, they'd still be our, you know, R2. Well, yeah, you think? I mean, this is, this is R1 and it's changing to, um, PRD4 or PSR. So that's, that's just a reaction. And that's what we're supposed to do in a sketch plan review, is get, give a reaction. And just to kind of counter the, um, some of the other statements about this being transitional, that's a, it's really zooming in on the, the R1s in the area. And I, uh, I can't speak, and I'm sure that as you go through the process, then there will be neighborhood meetings and things like that. If you've gotten any other feedback from neighbors or a church or whatever, I'd love to hear it. And then I was wondering also, because we have a comparison chart here, a compliance table that only shows, oh, it's PRD3, excuse me, and that, um, PSR. And what are, and maybe Chris can help us too. What are the, what distinguishes these two, um, zoning districts- distinguishes these two zoning districts? There may be some more flexibility, less flexibility in one or the other.
It is a different zoning district. It would be a planned senior residence zoning district. I'm sure that there are parking credits and other credits, depending upon location and design and that sort of thing. I can't tell you right off the top of my head all the requirements for it. It would be different. When Kerry took a look at this, I believe, this is what he thought would be appropriate, although I think you were considering the senior district as well.
Yeah, the only distinction that we understood after meeting with staff was the S designated senior. But the mathematical equation for calculating all the things you've mentioned are virtually identical between the two, just one is senior-focused or age-restricted.
And then I guess I want to, I want to know why the emphasis is on senior. What is the attraction of that to you?
I'll answer both your questions about valuation and reliance and senior. The, you know, the two homes that we have under contract contingent on this project that exist on Indianola are perhaps two of the oldest homes in that immediate area. Both, in my opinion, are prime candidates to be recycled. They're really, they're really in need of a lot of maintenance. So for the neighborhood, I think that we're removing and redeveloping in a classic infill sense. And from a valuation standpoint, that any diminution of value to the neighborhood is significantly greater under the current circumstance, living across the street from, as one kid called it, the haunted house when I was out there surveying the site. I think this is a significant improvement. And not everybody wants to spend a million dollars plus on a home, but they want a high-quality home. And these homes won't be great big Mercedes-Benz or Audi A8s. These will be the Audi A4. It's still a very high-quality home, but a smaller home. Let me see, zoning difference, diminution of value. Did I get them?
Yeah, the, I guess the preference for senior versus...
Oh, senior versus, I don't have a strong preference. I would work under either zoning because I honestly believe that there will be seven buyers that are age 50 or greater. So if, if staff suggests that they prefer to see the project brought forward with the senior requirement, I'm good, because I think that's my audience anyway. If the, if we want to have transitional zoning for transitional age groups, that it's not a stretch to see a young professional say, I want to live there. But I think I can find seven folks that would want to live there that are all age 50 or greater. We've had a lot of help in conceiving this concept and the marketability from Andrew Olive, who is the manager of the Edina Realty office at 50th and France. And he's also counseling the church on this real estate transaction. And he feels that he will have all these units sold before I can get them built. I like that.
Commissioner Scher?
You know, as a result of Commissioner Forrest's last observation about some of the houses that have been recently rebuilt across the street from your project, it suddenly struck me that if I lived in one of those homes, I think my concern, even if I loved your project, and I do think it's very attractive, would be that the garage dumps right in front of my house. And if we think of J as being the street that is, yes, a public street, but has served more in an alley capacity, J is where the other garage is. You know, you'd be garage to garage. I'd just like to put out there, as you look, if you look to further developing this or coming before us again formally, it might be interesting to flip the entrance to the garage.
We can certainly look at that.
Just a thought.
If that's the advice of staff and the commissioners, then we can, it's very possible. It, actually, it's totally possible. And we've looked at it that way. It makes for a less steep ramp into the lower-level garage if I come in off the site that's got the lower topography to begin with. But it does work the other way. So it's, I...
Those small numbers and that history, you might have an objection.
It's totally up to, we would take direction from the city on that.
If I might make a couple of comments, I think I'm that age group, and this idea is very, it's an attractive idea for the reasons that you mentioned. It's an opportunity to downsize, get out of a large home into a smaller home, but not have somebody on the other side of the wall, an individual, I mean, talking about the transitional zoning, yeah, but these are detached, single-family homes that happen to have a common garage underneath all of them, which I still can't quite get my arms around that. But anyway, so I think it makes some sense from that standpoint. I agree with Mr. Potts. I think it's a rather attractive concept. It puts me in mind of Milwaukee Street in Minneapolis, down near Franklin Avenue, that sort of feel, which is, I think it's, it's a nice feel. Depending on who's commenting at the time, I think you could get a lot of different reactions to this. People like me who live in a bigger place, another part of Edina, and would be interested in downsizing and being close to 50th and France, think it's a great idea. And I don't know what the people across the street are going to think about it. I think it would be important that you engage early and often the neighbors in the area to get their feel, because you know how that works.
Absolutely.
So, but, you know, I certainly would not, from my standpoint, I certainly would not try to discourage you from proceeding with this idea, because I think it's, it is a unique concept, and I think it would be, I think it would be beneficial to the community. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Which I guess is what you want to hear tonight, so.
It's helpful. All these comments are very helpful.
Other comments, Mr. Commissioner Fisher?
I would just want to reiterate what Commissioner Schroeder was saying. I think you would want to look into that issue pretty soon about, and I don't know if you'd have to go to all porous pavement on the north side, or what you would have to do to make sure, I'm thinking, and what we're referring to is, you know, what are the watershed districts' requirements. I'd really look into that and make sure that what you're going to ultimately be proposing is going to be possible from that perspective.
I understand, and we will engage with a rainwater management firm quickly to make sure that we get the penetration and perk rates right.
Commissioner Staunton?
And I just follow up my previous comments by kind of underscoring the fact that making a change in the comprehensive plan, making a change in the zoning is a substantial deal. And I think you'll find, given some of the recent history in the city, that people will want to be satisfied that you've reached out to the neighboring community to make sure that folks are going to be comfortable with what you're doing. And the more of that kind of front-end process before you trigger the formal request that you do, I think, would be to your benefit and would make it more likely that you could accomplish that. You're right that we can put some conditions on variances, but generally, that's going to come after we've made the comprehensive plan change and the zoning code change. And once we've made those changes, it's hard to go back. And so I think there's going to be folks who are going to be concerned about that, and you'd be well-served to try and preempt that by kind of reaching out to the community.
Thank you.
There are a couple of citizens in the meeting. Is any, are there any comments from the audience that anybody would like to make? I guess it was only one. Oh, there, no, there she is. Okay. Any other comments, closing comments from the members of the commission? Okay, Mr. Shane Wood, I thank you very much for bringing this proposal to us. It certainly is an interesting, an interesting approach to things. And, you know, I hope we can, from a personal standpoint, I hope we can see this thing, where do I sign up?
I think you will see where it over.
Okay, the next item under reports, recommendations, is ordinance amendment regarding variances as a result of the Krummenacher decision. Chris?
Thank you. Planning Commission is asked to consider an ordinance amendment to revise the city zoning ordinance to be in compliance with the recent bill passed by the legislature regarding variance review. Ordinance amendment was drafted by City Attorney Roger Knutson. You were given copies of the revised state statute language that was adopted into law, and a comparison of the old-new language was also put in the packets. Staff does recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the ordinance amendment as drafted to bring Edina's ordinance into compliance with the new state law. Basically, there were just four changes to the language. There are eight criteria in the variance legislation. Four of them changed. The language is very similar from the old to the new language. You were given a copy of that. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Questions of staff. Just so, just to reiterate, so I understand that City Attorney drafted this ordinance to conform with the statute that was recently passed by the Minnesota Legislature, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Questions of the commission? Questions by the commission?
Commissioner Carpenter? Chris, may I look at the proposed ordinance and compare it to the predecessor ordinance? And in particular, how it's been, how practical difficulties have been defined? It seems as if the draft that we have kind of takes them out of sequence a little bit. And I was curious if that was intentional for some reason, or if I'm mistaken. By way of example, if I were writing this, I would, I'd pull paragraph three out for the moment, and renumber four as paragraph three, and then embed within paragraph three, I think, the three components that comprise practical difficulties, which is, one, that the property, the use of the property will be in a reasonable manner not permitted by the section, that applied to the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, and then that the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. I think those are the three components that are actually practical difficulties. I think that's how the statute defines it.
Then I can certainly raise that question with Roger. I don't know why he has them in that particular order.
Well, I would say he does, he does kind of move the order around. In your review, do you find anything in the statute that is not in the ordinance or vice versa?
No, I think it's all in there. But what I worry about a little bit is that, that the reordering arguably changes what the definition of practical difficulties is. And to some extent, when you have, you can look at the same, fundamentally the same ordinance in two different formats, and then you worry a little bit about how one might be interpreted versus the other. And my inclination would be to try to track the, since we're basically plugging in the statutory language, would be to try to track it consistent with how the legislature adopted it. And I probably am raising a comment that, you know, Roger would probably have to respond to. I don't know, I don't know what went in the decision-making to draft it this way.
Yeah, we don't really have the benefit of his commentary here. Other comments by Commissioner Staunton?
Maybe I'm not reading it correctly, but I noticed that at the end of five, there is the word "and" suggesting that it, that there ought to be a six, but I don't see a six. And I assume six is the notion that you're not changing the essential character of the neighborhood. Well, that's up in three. So I don't know. I mean, somebody, I'm, my inclination is, you know, this is, I mean, we're just trying to take what the new legislation is and craft it into the, into the ordinance, and I'm inclined to rely on the city attorney to do that, so long as he's making sure that it conforms.
Well, the actions that are required tonight by the commission are to move this on to the city council. Is this right, Chris? And we could, depending on how a motion might be phrased, say we certainly approve the ordinance in concept, we want the ordinance to conform to the statutes, and that we just had a couple of questions about how it was drafted, and that might be cleared up before it gets to the city council.
I think that would be fine. So moved.
Is there a second to Commissioner Staunton's motion?
Elegantly crafted.
Other discussion. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you. I do note that I raised, I raised the question with Chris today, and she anticipated the question, how can we approve, how could we approve a variance prior to the time the ordinance was adopted? And the advice from the city attorney was that the state statute controls, and we act underneath, under the auspices of the statute, therefore, we're okay. So with that, we will pass this ordinance on to the city council with our comments. Let's see. Correspondence and petitions, we received the council connection in your, in your packet. Item nine on the agenda, Chair and Commission Member comments. I'm turning to Commissioners Platterter and Potts, who might give us an update. They were appointed to work on the renewable energy situation, and we'd like to hear if you have any status report for us on that.
Sure, just a quick update. We met with two members of the Energy Environmental Commission last week, and we, we got the ordinance that they're proposing. Right now, Ken and I and them are also, are going through right now, and we'll be meeting in about, about two weeks, I believe, to share comments and get some more information back. Our goal overall is to get this back to the Planning Commission in the range of late summer, early fall to look at it.
Very good. Questions of either of these members? Thank you very much. Appreciate your efforts. Other commission member comments? Commissioner Staunton?
Just a couple. First, I was reading with interest the council connection, and aside from the riveting topic of what we're going to do about the coyotes, I noted that the city council took action on the rooftop dining business. And I seem to recall that there was some suggestion about a future meeting of the council and Planning Commission to discuss this in greater detail. Do, perhaps the chair is aware of that, or any, anything to fill us in on as to how that went? Or maybe staff can?
Maybe staff can. I'm, I've been out of town the last three weeks. I plead ignorance.
I thought I saw in the paper that they were suggesting that there might be a Planning Commission-council joint.
They are suggesting that. I don't think that it's been said at this time. I don't think that it's been said at this time.
Well, that'll be interesting. The second topic, I just wanted to update folks on the progress of the Grandview District's small area planning process. We continue to move forward with that. There is a steering committee of approximately 35 to 40 members that's been formed, and an executive committee of eight members who work between meetings to kind of get things prepared for each steering committee meeting. We did meet as a steering committee on May 12th, had a good meeting that discussed a lot of concepts for potential future uses of the area, some really exciting and interesting ideas that I think we'll continue to be working on. And the steering committee meets again on June 16th, and members of the public are welcome. And so we'll continue to update you as we move forward.
Where will that meeting be, on the 16th?
The steering committee meetings are all scheduled for the senior center across the street.
Very good. Other comments, concerns, questions, opinions? Any comments from staff? Okay. Well, I thank you all for your attention to matters today and your work here on behalf of the city. With that, Commissioner Carpenter?
Mr. Chair.
Are we going to go down to the other end of the building? Oh, you've...
I'd like to move adjournments of tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Potts moves for adjournment. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.